Where'd Mike run off to?
Yeah.
He knows he's part of this, right?
Yep, I'm on my way. He's been nagged all day long.
Blackbird.
Oh, Mike, that's enough. That's enough. We did. Nobody did see.
Ready?
Ready.
Public Building Commission meeting will come to order. We have two items on our agenda this evening, first being the election of officers. Laura.
Per Bond Council, we discussed this. Officers are needed for the execution of whatever future documents are coming. So, in this particular instance, since we will have a different city administrator, the recommendation of your Bond Council that you choose the mayor as the chair, the vice-chair will be the city administrator, and then secretary slash treasurer would be myself, that is, per recommendation for the documents. So, that would be...
Your slate.
Yeah, that's your slate unless you don't like that.
So, we need a motion?
You do.
Yes.
I'd like to move. Go ahead, Chris.
I move that we make Mayor the chairman, Mike Press the vice-chairman, and Laura Gorley the secretary.
And I'm sorry, it looks like we need to do each one separately.
Okay.
So, that was for chair, then? Is that okay with you?
Yes.
Would you like to specify?
Specify, Mayor Gervetta as chair.
Okay, and then...
Second.
Okay.
Okay. Motion, Marrow, second. Harrison, that the mayor be named chairman of the PDC. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Randy. I'm not thinking of her on those.
Oh.
And that's fine.
I have a microphone, so...
You're using it.
Okay, so next would be vice-chair.
Vice-chair.
I move that we make Mike Press vice-chair.
Or his successor.
Or his successor, the vice-chair of the Public Building Commission.
Hi.
Motion, Marrow, second. Harrison, that we name Mike Press the successor, vice-chair of the PDC. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. And secretary.
Flash treasurer.
Flash treasurer.
I move we...
Unruh.
I move we name Laura Gorley secretary-treasurer of the Public Building Commission.
Second.
Motion, Marrow, second. Harrison, that Laura Gorley be named secretary or treasurer of the PDC. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. New business item number two. Consider adopting a resolution authorizing the offer for sale of lease revenue refunding bonds, Series 2012A of the City of Gardner, Kansas, Public Building Commission. This is resolution number...
Seven.
Seven. Wow, we didn't have this before.
PDC resolution, right.
Okay. Very active commission. All right. Does anyone need an explanation of this action and what it means?
Let's do it for the recording.
Do it for the recording?
Let's do it. Um, as we discussed last Monday night at work session, the city's financial advisor, Springstead, routinely from time to time, watch, monitor our outstanding debt for possibilities of interest cost savings conducted by refinancing. As discussed last Monday night, recommended practice to make it worth it for refinancing is three percent, and right now, this is almost 10 percent as it stands today. So, we stand to save about forty, $369,000 over the remainder of the term through 2021 merely because of the interest rate difference. So, if you wish to proceed, we have authorized, what you're doing with this resolution is authorizing a notice of sale. The sale will be August 6.
Any questions? No? How would the commission like to proceed?
I move we adopt resolution number seven, authorizing the offer for sale of lease revenue refunding bond, Series 2012A of the City of Gardner, Kansas, Public Building Commission.
Second.
Motion, Harrison, second. Marrow, that we adopt resolution number seven. Harrison.
Yes.
Marrow.
Yes.
Press.
Yes.
Gorley.
Yes.
And Gervetta vote yes. Resolution number seven passes.
And you do need to officially adjourn the meeting.
Okay. There being no further business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Come here.
Second.
Motion, Harrison, second. Marrow, that we adjourn. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
And before you go away, I need you to sign the resolution. And there's also a consent that we had the meeting, and it's because we don't conduct regular meetings, but it was okay to do it after the meeting, once you knew who was the officers.
Okay.
And there's underneath the names is the titles or whatever, so... We will, for your calendar, we will do in this again prior to the August 6 meeting. The PDC will meet again and accept the results of the sale on that day, and we will take action, and then the governing body of the regular council will take action at that same night.
Same night?
Mm-hmm.
Sir? She was saying happy birthday.
It is. Who's that stable? Can't.
No?
She doesn't know.
You sure? Send you happy birthday.
Sure.
Okay.
Hey, the captain's back there. Do you want to get enough for the, on the table? I started to get them out.
He worked hard the end of the week, but just, yeah, it's awesome. I've been a twenty years, and somebody has to pay for my taxes, so it was awesome.
Did you get out of the city or were you at the camp?
Sorry?
Nope, stayed in city and filled a week up with stuff.
What do you need to do?
Frank apart?
No, heck no. We never made it apart.
I thought I saw something to that effect somewhere.
What? He's a part of...
He's bragging.
He's a part of...
Stand on the green monster, huh?
No, no. Took a picture on the green monster. Not as far as that.
Oh, okay. How did you get in there?
Well, they'll let you go. There's, right by the fiscal pole, they'll let you go up there and take a picture. There's a little area, but that is...
Okay, okay. I didn't know.
Sign my life over here.
Yep, so they will let you get a little bit into it.
That's fun. Need to see baseball in a place.
I'm sorry, I'm hogging the area.
Thank you.
I am.
Happy birthday.
I might have been born in a barn.
Uh, that's Randy.
My dad came home with a warrant, said he converted barn dew.
There you go.
You can say, where you born in a barn? Yes, I was. Proud of it.
Please say, I will be gone next Monday.
Okay, uh, we're, we're off next Monday.
We are? Yes, we, but I'll be here, and I'll just wait for you guys.
Okay.
I won't get in the way of my Homer Derby tickets. I feel so guilty.
No, no, no. Work's...
Work's the last time to have here, yes. I got free tickets, Keith. You wanted to take those. Huh? Have you already bought yours? I have. If you got free, I'll take them, though. I know guys would love it. Oh, yeah. Do you really?
Mm-hmm.
For what? My employees. For the Homer Derby, for everybody. For the whole thing, it's like $2,000. I'm not baseballing.
Whoa. Randy.
Talk to you later. Buddy. Things are lined up.
We're going to the Futures Game and the Celebrity Softball.
We got the whole strip. I was like, you'll never be able to, you'll never be able to go again for this month because you're off state.
Yeah, my son got...
They won't come to Kansas City again unless we build another stadium.
My son and his friends have seen the tickets or the sufficient portion of the tickets again, so they'll be there.
So, new phone, I can't figure this out. What do you want to do? I mean, I can, I can lock the screen. I can bring the volume up, I guess. I, I don't know. I, you know, I just got it separated. I turned the volume down, because that seems only worked for the reason, is it raining today? And I got emails, came in and leaked and whatever. Yeah, and they couldn't figure out how to turn that off. I asked, I didn't have a problem with it. Smithy, I don't have a problem with the technology for the construction. I don't know what happened to this. About past year. Yeah, it took me about 24 hours to decide that I was really going to like it. But, you know, it's very, it's very, it's very hard to try and think about doing something different. Yeah, the touchscreen, I get a little tired of...
Yeah, scrappy.
Yeah, I'm getting better at it.
What, Kazon?
Is that how you're...
Well... That's true, Randy was a team. Should have never played anything like that.
Little stream, and they got all these mysterious people that are running two college restaurants who force you off, younger than two doctors. Maybe not first anymore.
Guy's gonna stay at campus, not too busy at home.
In ideal.
I think it's seven o'clock. You all please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. We do have one presentation this evening. Karen Lynn is here, finished our audit. Jackie Schultz from our finance group, and of course, Laura Gorley, to present the city financial statements in our CAFER.
Before, before Ms. Lynn gets started, because some of you are new, please indulge me in reminding you about how important the CAFER is. We, not only have we completed our 2011 end-of-year financial audit, and that's why Karen is here to discuss that, but we'll be submitting it for a GFOA Comprehensive Annual Financial Report Award, and I know that we have a, a number of these now, but every year, they change the rules. So, every year that we still get it is, is an important thing, but I wanted to make sure that those of you who are on the council who are new understand that this award's been around from the Government Finance Officers Association since 1945, and the purpose of it is to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles to prepare comprehensive annual financial reports that evidence the spirit of transparency and full disclosure, and then to make recognition of governments that do that. And even though many, many states and many counties and entities participate in this, there's only about 25 cities in Kansas that get this award, so, and we're one of them. And I just wanted to make sure, I wanted to point that out. And in addition to that, Karen's here to tell you that we did well on our audit. I know that's what she's going to say. She's already told me. And she's going to walk you through all the things that she's required to tell you and here to answer your questions. And also, I want to recognize Jackie as our county manager, and she's hiding back there in the back, but she has really, she's completely taken the lead on the, on the audit and the CAFER. So, I just wanted to make sure to recognize her for that.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to present the results of the audit, and what I would like to do is to go through, I believe in your packet, in advance, you received a copy of this letter addressed to mayor and city council. And that letter really has the important things that we believe you should know about the audit process, and so I want to take just a few moments to go through those, that information with you. Our responsibility, after you hire us, is to perform the audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America. Those standards require that we plan and perform the audit in order to provide reasonable assurance that the financial estate, financial statements are free of material misstatement, and so we design our audit with that objective in mind. In addition, because you received some federal and state dollars, we're required to audit in accordance with government auditing standards, which has some additional compliance requirements that we need to look at. Additionally, the state of Kansas has some statutory items that they want us to take a look at during the audit, so we also look at those matters that, that come from the Kansas Municipal Audit Guide, and we look at those as part of the audit. Things we bring to your attention, if there were any newly adopted accounting policies or amended policies, we would bring those to your attention. While the city internally did not have any changed accounting policies, there was a new governmental accounting standards board statement that became effective this year, and so that, the effects of those statements are reported in this year's financial statements. It, the name of the statement is Fund Balance Reporting and Governmental Fund Type Definitions, GASB Statement 54, and it did a couple of main things to, to the presentation in the financials. The first one is it changed the definition of how a special revenue fund is determined, as well as some of the other funds, but the most significant effect was on special revenue funds. And some funds that had been called special revenue funds in the past, no longer under the new definition are able to be called special revenue funds. So, there was some shifting within the financial statements of some of those types of activities that had been special revenue funds and are now reported as a part of the general fund. So, that's one shift that we saw. The second thing is in fund balance reporting, where we used to have reserved and unreserved fund balances, now we have new, new, four new levels, basically, if you will, for reporting fund balances. And those levels really depend upon how the monies that are in that fund, how they are restricted. Are they restricted by external body or legislation? Are they restricted by this body or a body that maybe you, as the main governing body, might delegate to a committee or something else? So, depending on where the restriction comes from, that's how the fund balances are now reported. So, it's, it's to provide a little bit better information for the readers of the financials of the level of restriction on the monies that remain in, in fund balances. We also, as a part of our audit, look for things that would be significant or unusual transactions or any alternative treatments in relation to generally accepted accounting principles, and we would bring those to your attention. There were nothing in either of those two areas that we need to, to identify for you. We also take a look at any items that rely on management's judgment or, or are part of an estimation process. Page four of this attachment does have listed the one that we consider to be the significant estimate, and it is the other post-employment benefit obligation, which is a liability that's reported in these financial statements for, for health care for retirees. The, the information is derived from an actuarial report and an actuarial valuation, and so there are some, some items within that that are considered to be estimated. So, we take a look at the process, and we determined it to be a reasonable estimate of that liability. We also attached to this packet the audit adjustments that were made as a part of the audit process. We provide those so that you can be aware of the types of things that are recorded as audit adjustments. Similarly, we have schedules in the back that are called summary of past adjustments, and these are adjustments that we identified during the audit process, but because they were not material enough to the financial statements to make those adjustments, they are just identified and reported here, but they are not actually adjusted into the financial statements. But again, they're provided as schedules in the, in this attachment for your information. We would always bring to your attention anything in the area of disagreements with management about any matters related to the audit process, any difficulties in the audit process, anything like that that would be problems or issues, we would make sure that you were aware of those, because obviously, things like that can be indications of more serious problems, and we would want you to be aware of that. There were no issues or problems, no difficulties in the audit process, and in fact, full cooperation. Everyone's very prepared for us when we arrive, and we also know that a lot of time is spent in, in preparing for us to come in for the audit, and we do appreciate the hard work that Laura and her staff put in, in, in preparation for and during the audit process. We have separately two significant deficiencies that we reported, one for the city, and it's really a continuation from the prior year, and we have seen significant improvement over the last several years in regards to this significant deficiency, and it's related to the number of adjusting entries that are made as a part of the audit process. If you remember, two years ago, there were 33 audit adjustments made. Last year, there were 20. This year, there's only 16. So, the, the number's coming down. There's lots of improvements. Great effort is being put into this process by Laura and her staff to reduce the number of adjusting entries, and we can, can continue to see improvement there. We did still report it as a significant deficiency this year, but we are anticipating that that number's going to continue to go down because they're working very hard on, on improving that. The, the other significant deficiency is reported in a separate letter, and it's related to the Airport Association. We identified some, some issues with the payroll and sales tax returns, the quarterly returns during the year, and so we have reported that as a significant deficiency, and that information is reported in that separate letter that you have here in your packet. The last item in the packet is a, on, a letter on Gardner, City of Gardner, letterhead. This is items that we are required by our standards to have in writing as the final part of the audit process, things that we talk about during the audit, some things that are underlying assumptions and matters related to the financial statements themselves. We require this, our standards require this to be in writing, and we have included that letter here for you. We encourage you to read the letter and ask any questions that you might have, and we hope that the information in this letter can, can help you with your fiduciary responsibilities and to help you better understand the financial statements as you go through them. So, please take a few moments to read through that, and if anyone has any questions for me regarding anything that you see in there, please don't hesitate to contact me or to ask me those questions. And that really brings us to the conclusion of the, the audit presentation. As you can see, a very positive report. We did issue unqualified opinions on all the opinion units in the financial statements, which is the best form of opinion that can be given to, to a set of financials. So, I would be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have about the information in that letter or the audit report itself.
Thank you, Karen. Questions? Questions for Laura, or?
I'm gonna clarify a few things. I'd like to elaborate.
Sure, absolutely.
And Karen can make sure I don't say it wrong, but I wanted, because there's citizens that watch the videos and whatever, I want to make sure that you all understand that when she was speaking of GASB 54, and you heard me talk during the budget process about special revenue funds and fund balances, GASB 54 is related to reporting. We are not required to change our budget process. So, these things where she's talked about moving some funds into the general fund, that is merely for reporting purposes. We didn't do any of that when we were talking about the general fund and the general fund balance, and we didn't close any of our special revenue funds. We're not required to. How it's reported is where that happens, and unless you're going to go through and read the CAFER, the people who care about that are the readers of the CAFERs that are investing in our bonds and whatever. It's to make it more apples to apples with the rest of the world. It has nothing to do with what we do here as budget and policymaking. And another thing, so, you agree with that?
Sure.
Okay, so while she's standing here, it's, it's reporting only. Also, when, when Karen mentioned significant deficiency and talked about how we've been making steady progress, that is a reflection of frankly inexperienced becoming experienced. As, as the employees stay and learn and understand more about governmental accounting and work with the auditors who are very professional, very responsive, and are very good about educating and answering our questions, that's why you're seeing improvement. So, a reflection of hard work and, and making a real effort to understand what they weren't doing correctly and are now making improvements. And finally, the airport deficiency, that was actually addressed in our CAS here, and I just want to make sure for the record that it, the airport does not report to the finance staff. The airport board is overseen by you all. So, although finance staff did contact Mr. Hayden and discussed this with him, and he is aware, he was aware we were meeting tonight, and they have hired, as my understanding, some outsourced people to help them with making sure they do this correctly, and there can be no resolution of the deficiency, as I stated in the CAS, until such time as next year's audit comes and the auditors will review is what they've put in place, enough to make this reporting of a deficiency go away. So, I just wanted to clarify those things, and again, I want to thank the, the auditors for being very responsive to our questions and very proactive in helping us understand and be more professional, and I'm, again, I want to thank Jackie. She did, she pretty much did it all this year, so, good for her. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Anything you want to say?
Very much. Very good.
Thank you.
We do have time on our agenda for public comment. At this time, anyone wishing to speak on city matters or that are not part of the agenda or, or items that are part of the agenda, not part of a public hearing, are welcome to come forward at this time. to come forward at this time. That being the case, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a council member who wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove consent agenda item number three.
Would council like to proceed with items one, two, four, five, and six?
I move we approve items, consent agenda items one, two, four, five, and six.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second Freeman, that we approve consent items one, two, four, five, and six. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Consent item number three, consider reappointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I don't particularly want to block appointments in that, saying we should do that in this case. We've got two members of the Board of Zoning Appeals that are also planning commission members. If, in general, we generally don't have people that are serving on more than one board or commission or council. At least, that's the way it seems like it is. On top of that, the Board of Zoning Appeals oftentimes is acting in reaction to things that the planning commission and/or the council put into effect, as I understand it. So I am very pleased that Andy Copeland and Tori Roberts both continue to wish to serve in these capacities, but when it comes around for reappointment, I want to think about whether or not we should have people on the planning commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals at the same time.
And that was, I guess, from an historical perspective, before Andy and Tori were recommended for appointment, that was a question that was raised, is, you know, can you serve on a planning commission and the BZA? And not having someone from that team here, the BZA is there to, you know, appeal denials based on zoning, not necessarily decisions. So, I mean, it is fairly narrow in its focus. But I, that was, again, my question is, well, the planning commission's upholding, you know, zoning that we need to see people this or whatever the case may be, is this okay? And that was discussed and cleared time, but absolutely have no issue whatsoever with considering that, and I don't believe Andy or Tori either would.
They don't have a real, they don't have a real full slate at the BZA, I don't think.
Well, the BZA, yeah. I mean, up until, I think, this last year, the BZA met maybe twice in 10 or 15 years. So, I mean, it's a fairly rare, rare event. So that was the, and that was the, one of the reasons for suggesting is that they could bring then a certain amount of experience and knowledge to that, to that board, but certainly understand the concern as well.
Yeah, I'm not looking to hold it up, but, you know, just wanted to save that for the record.
Very good.
I move we approve consent agenda item number three.
Motion Morrow, second Harrison, that we approve consent item number three. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. New business item number one, consider adopting a resolution authorizing the offer for sale of lease revenue refunding bond series 2012A of the City of Gardner, Kansas Public Building Commission. Laura.
As we discussed last Monday night at work session, at 6:45 tonight, the Public Building Commission met and acted upon the approval of authorization of sale for the refinancing lease revenue bonds for City Hall. And as discussed at work session last Monday night, it is merely for interest, I wouldn't say merely, but it is for interest cost savings of over $369,000 over the course of the remainder of the term. There is no increase to the term of the maturity. The bonds still are set to expire in November 2021. This is simply a reflection of a much better interest rate, and the Public Building Commission acted first, and the governing body approves the actions of the Public Building Commission. And also, as we discussed last Monday night, you'll be entering into a written agreement to take care of ongoing disclosure with the SEC, which we already do, and you'll also be entering into a new irrevocable lease agreement, which basically, in all actuality, just means we'll make the debt payments to the trustee, and the trustee will pay the bondholders. And that's what we've been doing, and it's what we'll continue to do, and that's their assurance that the city will continue to pay. We will pay rent to use this building. And finally, this resolution authorizes members of the board, PBC board, and your financial advisors and your bond counsel to take whatever actions is necessary to move forward on this bond sale, which is always included in all of our resolutions regarding bond sales. No surprises.
Laura, I don't see any place, maybe I missed it on the resolution, that talks about the maturity date of the bonds. I know you said it in the.
It isn't typically in there.
Oh, why wouldn't it be? I mean.
It's, I mean, the resolutions are prepared by your bond counsel that meet the requirements of bond sales, and it's not typically, there may be something in the authorization and delivery, because there's usually, which will come on sale day, there's usually attachments regarding the amortization schedule, if you wish to see them, but there is no increase from the maturity schedule. We're not extending the term. One thing that was included was, if it doesn't achieve that accepted 3%, we will not move forward on the day of the sale, but we've got plenty of clearance for that to change.
So I guess my next question is, rather than go out nine years, why don't we go out less years and use the windfall that way, pay it off early?
Well, there are rules about paying things off early.
I mean, we could issue the bonds as long as there's no provision in the resolution, we could issue it for eight years, perhaps.
Not at this point.
Why not?
Well, because you have to, we have to discuss those things when we're structuring before we started on an OS official statement, before, we don't know what kind of savings we would get if you start doing that. And there are, like I said, you have to involve your bond counsel in these decisions, because you can't just pay debt off early. It doesn't work that way.
Are there penalties attached to that if you do that?
Well, your bondholders have agreed to a certain number of years.
Right.
And if you, when we talk about, remember how sometimes we talk about there's a bond with a call in it, and we couldn't even do this refinancing until this call provision? There's rules about if you do it ahead of time, it's called an advance refunding, and if you do that, you can only do it once ever, so if interest rates get better, you can't do it again. And it's to provide the bondholders and the market who are interested in your bonds a certain amount of assurance on how long their investment's going to last.
Right.
And we do a competitive sale, so you can't go out now and.
I mean, we didn't know.
We would have to, well, you knew about it when I knew about it. I mean, when market conditions were optimum. If you're going to, if you want to make these kind of changes, we will have to start over. You can't go out now and say, oh, because I don't know what the market will look like if we decrease the term, maybe you won't get this projected rate. And I don't even know if it meets the rules without inquiring of bond counsel if we can shorten the term. Those options were not asked prior to this. And we don't typically shorten terms. That's, and I'm guessing the reason why, even when we talk about these refinancings, is because we can't.
Well, I mean, you can't shorten it if there's a call provision, but if you're reissuing the bond, you could shorten it.
But we're not reissuing your bonds, we're refinancing these bonds.
It's the same period.
It's not, it's not a whole new bond issue.
It's called a refinancing.
A refinancing of the existing bond.
Right.
True, but that, that just means a new bond issue?
No, it does not.
It does not?
No, it does not, not in legal terms.
And that's, bond counsel should.
Answer those questions.
Right. I mean, she's totally aware that we were pondering upon doing this. It's been on the radar, watching the interest rates in the market for maybe a couple months.
I mean, you're, you're basically extinguishing old debt and issuing new debt. So how is that not a new issue?
We don't have bond counsel here to answer that question.
I know, I'm asking.
I know, but Mike's not.
He says he's. To the extent of my familiarity with it, they are the same debt structure. The bondholders have an expectation of a length of the term of their fixed income on those bonds. You can't arbitrarily make that change when you refinance them.
But we're, we're calling them anyway.
But has federal, there's federal tax implications in this, because we issued exempt bonds, and these are based on the credit of the city, and there's a lease revenue agreement, and there's a lease agreement involved, and I don't know that we just want to sit here and say, you know what, we want to go on a shorter term. We would have to involve bond counsel and Springstead.
If this would have been a financial gain to shorten the term, would that have been something that Springstead would have likely brought to our attention?
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, the risk is that the money gets spent somewhere else, and we really, you know, we're, and this way, we're actually paying down debt early, which seems to me to be a preferred practice, given the amount of debt we have in other projects. I mean, it's sort of like taking 10% off of your paycheck and sticking it in the bank, even though it's painful, it pays off to the end.
The refinancing and refunding of bonds is the typical way that municipalities save money on debt issuance when interest rates change. Changing the term is not a practice that I am familiar with, but you'll need bond counsel to probably tell you the reasons why. I'm not a lawyer.
Jim, do you, do you know?
Well, usually in a refunding, you have, you have an outstanding debt in, at a certain interest rate. When you do a refunding, you've achieved a lower interest rate. The funds that are obtained from that refunding are then pledged to the payment of the old bonds, and you've achieved that difference between the original interest rate and the new interest rate, and that's the savings to the city. All this resolution is, is really just a first step authorization to proceed with the sale. When you actually sell the bonds, you'll come back like we always do here and approve the bond sale, and you'll know the terms and everything to do with it.
But there was no expectation for reducing the term of the bond. It will, it will continue to be the same maturity, and the estimated savings are about $40-some thousand a year. And that money goes to the bottom line in the bond and interest fund. I mean, it's not, they don't send it somewhere else, still living in the fund. There's laws about that.
Understanding that at this stage, with this particular action, it's not a point where we could review it in that way, but the next time that the flag goes up that says this opportunity is going to present itself again. Can we then say, look at what it would happen if we maintained the same terms? Or we shorten the term, maintain the payment at the rate it is now, shorten the terms, and then come back with some of the answers that Larry's had?
Sure, absolutely.
Take us what we can and can't do and why.
Well, I will make sure that house stuff happens the next time, and that there may be some interest if it's able to. I mean, each bond issue has its own rules.
Absolutely.
And if it's possible to shorten a term, I will certainly bring that up to bond counsel and ask what, and the financial advisors. We work as a team, we're all involved on this. Can we shorten the term? Can, I mean, I know you can sometimes, well, I shouldn't say no, sometimes you can lengthen the term. We've not asked to do that, and we don't always work with, I mean, this is a lease revenue bond, it's a little bit different than GO, which is a little bit different than the KDHE loans we do, and they all have their own rules, but that's why you need your bond counsel. There may be federal tax implications for the bondholders, not necessarily for the city. We don't pay taxes. You could be getting into something on bondholders that I, I have no clue, because I'm not a bond attorney.
So, yeah, so next time we'll ask those questions.
Sure, absolutely.
Get clarity to that.
I can, I will make sure that, to bring that up henceforward.
I think that's great.
Would council like to proceed with resolution number?
1872.
1872.
I move that we adopt resolution number 1872, authorizing the offer for sale of lease revenue refunding bond series 2012A of the City of Gardner, Kansas Public Building Commission.
Second. Motion Freeman, second Gregorsik, that we adopt resolution number 1872. Freeman?
Yes.
Gregorsik?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Fotovic?
Yes.
Staff, any updates to the council? Jim?
Just one thing I might mention quickly here is the July 4th fireworks display has been moved to Celebration Park and take place there this July 4th, which is Wednesday evening. Reason for that change is there's construction taking place at the Gardner Edgerton High School District Activity Complex, so with that construction activity, they needed it to be moved to another site. So we'll have it there. Some activities will start at 5:00 PM around the playground and shelter areas, tailgating. It's welcome, same atmosphere as what has historically taken place at the high school. Should also mention that Fire District will be on-site during that display as well, in case anything negative happens, so.
We had a communication today from Fire District that while we are in a burn ban in Johnson County, this display can go forward.
Yes, sir.
But again, that's, they're watching that day to day, but as of this morning, that is planned to go forward, the public display, of course, in Johnson County, personal fireworks are not permitted, so they are by default banned, but I would assume that personal works would be banned as well. I don't know how that works on their, on their burn bans.
And I will be meeting with the Fire District as well, so the Police Department tomorrow morning for, to discuss some details on that. Any other changes or delays of any kind, we'll certainly keep you folks notified.
Tonight is our last.
Yeah, I have a question for staff. Laura, if Councilman Fotovic had been able to get in touch with you last Tuesday after the work session, or Wednesday after he'd received his package on Tuesday evening, with the questions that he had in regards to the refinancing, would you have been able to give him a more, not necessarily a different answer, but answer it more succinctly and after?
I'm more informed now.
A more informed answer.
Certainly.
Would have had time to contact bond counsel, and I mean, Public Building Commission's already acted at this point on that arrangement, so we would have to start over. So, yeah, I could have actually, I could have asked bond counsel or financial advisors to completely shorten the terms that was allowed under these provisions, under this particular issuance, and I don't know.
Would it have been any different?
I don't know that it would have been. I don't know if it's allowed, I don't know if it's not allowed, just to tap.
As if I would have thought of the question earlier, I would have asked.
Okay, well, that's, I mean, this is, we had this discussion last Monday. The packets came out on Tuesday. There was plenty of information that was available for it, and answers, informed answers to be had if you just ask them in advance.
Again, if I, if I thought of the question, I would have asked the question earlier. Sometimes it's questioned.
And then when staff, when staff gives an answer of they don't know that they'd have to ask council, maybe you stop it at that point and say, okay, would you please ask council and get back to me, and avoid a 20-minute or back and forth, asking the same question for which you're not going to get a different answer. So I think if that's the case, let's have a little respect for our staff and allow them the opportunity to research and get back to you. And if you want them to get back to you in a public meeting, saying, I'd like you to get back to me in a public meeting, so that everyone can hear it or can be on tape. But that's the point of doing this. If they don't have an answer to the question, they can't answer it.
And I, I welcome all of you to come up with these questions in advance as well.
Well, I think Mr. Morrow's already.
No one did. Apparently.
Perhaps no one.
No one cares?
Cared that that was a right approach, that they felt that the right approach is to move with the reduced interest rate.
So you've been in contact with what, bond counsel for beyond Monday? I mean, was last Monday, a week ago Monday, we found out about this, right?
Talked about it at work session.
Yeah.
Was it last, was it the last work session?
I had them from early to work session to inform you ahead of time.
Right, when was that? What date was that?
Last Monday.
Okay, so one week ago and you found out about it?
We've been monitoring it.
Right, but when did you start working on it?
Didn't do anything until we started putting the schedule together, maybe three weeks before that, maybe, a schedule, not a lot.
So we knew about, we could have potentially known about it a month in advance?
No.
Well, she said three weeks. She was.
We started researching it. We didn't know necessarily what our recommendation to the council was going to be.
Oh, right, but if she had said, hey, we're thinking about doing this, I, three weeks ago, probably would have called the question.
Councilmen, we could come up every day with something we're thinking about doing. Would you like a memo on that too?
I would not.
I second that. Whether it's a month ago, Mr. Fotovich, or a week ago, if you want to do your due diligence, put it forth in writing so that we can be prepared because in my opinion, the gotcha tactics that you have with our staff.
What is gotcha about?
It's not fair.
What is gotcha about asking?
It's not respectful neither.
What is gotcha about asking?
You're missing the greater, the greater point that Mr. Morrow's making.
No, I want to know, what is the gotcha about asking if we could pay the debt off earlier? Did you know that answer?
That's not here nor there.
Did you know the answer?
The answer is no, but if I had the question, I would have asked well in advance of tonight so that they could be prepared and have a.
On the topic for six or seven minutes, I didn't know the question when I asked, or, you know, a week ago. Sometimes things come to you as you're thinking about them and just mulling them, you know, around your mind, so.
And when the answer comes back, I can't give you that answer, I have to talk to bond counsel. End it.
Okay, well, I mean, maybe, you know, that's the purpose of these meetings is someone else can say, hey, maybe it's worth waiting a week. I mean, is that possible?
I don't know that, you know, with $360,000, I mean, $40,000 a year, $360,000 worth of savings over the course of the loan, I mean, you know, it's pretty much a no-brainer.
I look forward to all of your questions on the last budget presentation. We'll see what you guys come up with.
Dito.
All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion Morrow, second Harrison, that we adjourn. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
You ready to move forward with the budget stuff?
Yes.
And would you like me to go through why you have the replacement spreadsheets you do and also follow up to a good deal of questions you asked last week? Would you like me to start there?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And were you made aware of the change in the fund balance, why we came up, why we came up with a change in fund balance? I know that we weren't taped last week because, okay, if you could do a quick overview on our fund balance change in the general fund.
Very briefly, well, okay, one of the first pages in the one that says budget notebook revisions, you have that right now? Okay, so the first page in that says, general fund 2011 actual through 2018 projected. And in years 2015 and 16, previously, we had a fund balance, hold on, I actually have the old one.
Seventeen percent.
Yeah, I was going to say it was less than 20.
Seventeen percent on both years.
Okay, 17% on both years. And so at the last work session, after a great deal of discussion with Mr. Press and after reviewing, we got between the time I originally presented that, general fund balance of 17% in those years, I got one more month of sales tax, sales tax return from the state and that gave me six months to look at. And halfway through the year, I decided that because county sales tax, our share of the county sales tax was coming in 17% higher than what I had seen before, I was willing to make an adjustment during this current year budget of 2012, that's the column that says 2012, I could go halfway and change that to an 8% increase because previously that number was completely flat. It was 1.2 million and I had left it at 1.2 million. And just changing that number by half of what I've seen in the trend, after talking to a good many of my peers, both within this county and one outside of this county and Mr. Press's conversation with city managers and the mayor's conversations with area mayors, the conclusion was made that I could change that at least halfway and that gives half the year before it still crashed, but it's going to, but I don't think it will. And then in 2013, I inflated that, previously I had used 3% inflation off the flat, so now I went 5% off of the increase. And just that change in county sales tax for 2012, 2013 resulted in the fund balance that you see on this revised page. So in addition to that, we also talked about the $29,000 police car, that in police administration, there was a column that said department request and it had zero and manager approved, it said 29,000. All that is is a typo, I removed it from the wrong column. So that's completely been removed now and those two changes, they're a little bit like whack-a-mole. You do something to one spot and it pops up somewhere else. So that's why you have a revision for the general fund that shows the fund balances and it also takes care of why you have revision for the revenue summary, that's to reflect the county sales tax changes I made. And then the page that says police administration, that shows the removal of the police car. That's the three changes and that's why you have those three different versions. And then the water funds one, where it says you have a new water fund and a new water distribution page, that's because of the mini excavator that Mr. Green mentioned the other day, how it shouldn't have been in there, so I took that out and that makes the changes on those two pages. So that's, you have now a new revised showing all those things. Also, council had inquired about mowing, the mowing assessment in the pass-through where we assess when we go out and mow because people didn't mow. I talked to Jim Sherman about that and he looked at his, you asked for a breakdown of, make sure we weren't, if we raised our fees for administration recovery or whatever, that we wouldn't be hurting residents. And we asked for a breakdown on how many were residents and how many were other than bank-owned or whatever. And about 90% of what we mow and assess is because it's no longer in the hands of the residents. It's with a bank or it's with a maintenance company or it's with someone other than someone who's living in that house. And we don't assess, mow and then assess people who have contacted the city and said, I can't mow my grass because I'm elderly or I'm disabled or whatever and apparently that policy's been in place for quite some time. So we will not be harming anybody who cannot help themselves if council did choose to raise the administration fee component. We actually do have an administration fee component within those mowing assessments of about $30. Jim Sherman says it's been on the radar to raise that to about 50 and there, he, you know, he feels that's probably closer to in line with other cities, but we've really done no particular comparison because recovery of administration costs would be based on whatever wages are being paid in another city and whatever other components are involved. So it would really be just a decision on what do you want Gardner to be. His recommendation was 50. I don't know that he's spent a great deal of time reflecting on that. He just said it's been, in his mind, the 30's been too low for quite some time. So that's something you can discuss. And finally, I also checked on the cost for an election. There is no cost for any countywide election. That's, it's zero. If, if you had a primary, it would be approximately $3 per registered voter and Mr. Nibby said use 10,000 registered voters, so it'd be $30,000. However, I will caution that in keeping with this is I don't include revenues that might happen. I don't know that I would, my staff recommendation, Mr. Press and I have discussed, I don't know that you would want to tie up $30,000 in general fund expenditures for something that is more unlikely than some of the revenues that I did not include as a primary because your general election doesn't cost anything.
But, but like you said before, we're not committing that money, we're just budgeting for it.
You're not committing that money.
But you said tie up, really?
Well, you're, you are allocating or earmarking or whatever you want to use as a term, if you.
Wouldn't you rather overestimate?
No, not, not in something, not unless you want me to do the same thing on the revenue side and say, I'm really, really, really sure something's going to come in in the bond and interest because I've talked to attorneys and talked to attorneys and talked to attorneys and I didn't do it because I can't be certain. I don't think, I don't think we should mix the two, my opinion.
You never want to be liberal on the revenue projections, you want to be conservative.
No.
But on the expenses, you want to be liberal and not conservative, right?
That's closer to what we do than.
Okay, so what's the harm in putting them in?
You're taking that money out of circulation?
Yeah, you're taking it away from some.
No, really, we're budgeting 30,000 more than we had in the current, in the current plan, which I think was, here, what is it? Fund, we're having a loss, 2013 shortfall of 604,900, so it'd be 634,900.
Right, but you're taking it at the possibility of a primary election, you're taking that money out of circulation for just that, for, for someone who might need a piece of equipment or for whatever, I mean, this is your discussion. I don't have anything else to say.
If it doesn't come to fruition, the money doesn't get spent.
When would the primary take place?
March.
March, the first Tuesday thereof.
And is there a certain number of candidates before a primary is triggered?
Four, for a position.
For four a position?
Yes.
So if we have three positions, definitely we'd need.
13?
If you have, you have two council positions and one mayoral position, so you'd need four mayoral candidates and you would need eight.
And then he said plus one, I think. There's been a plus one involved.
I think it's two plus one on the mayor. It's one more than the number of seats.
One more than, one more than the.
Number of seats you have open.
Right, so in the case of a council, you'd have two, four council candidates for two seats, there would not be a primary. Five, there would not be a primary and six, there would not be a primary. It would be seven. There's three, the way I understand it, you can have three, three candidates for a seat before the primary kicks in.
Yeah, so it'd be, we have two council seats open.
Right.
So it'd be, so four council, four candidates would trigger.
Two seats.
Right.
So you have two council members per seat under normal circumstances. With the plus one, it would be three council members per seat, so six, right?
I don't think that's how it works, well, I mean, I'm not sure.
And then four for mayoral.
Yeah, well, we had, how many, we had three seats last time and we had?
Eight candidates.
And there was not a primary?
That's correct.
On the mayor's side, it would be, how many?
Four. Well, we had three before and there was no primary.
No, we had a, oh.
There were four. It was primaries with mayor, I believe.
Yeah, but, I mean, there was three on the ballot when we voted.
Oh, when you voted, right.
Yeah, so there, I mean, obviously.
So it would take four.
Take four for the mayor and two, three for each council seat.
Right, but one, one of those trigger points obligates the city to $30,000. I mean, if there's four mayor candidates, it doesn't matter how many on the, on the council member seats, right? Because there's going to be a primary.
Right.
So that, I mean, the council's free after that. So it only takes four mayor candidates to trigger a primary.
Right.
Which seems, you know.
Six council.
Six seats is 70% likely, I would say.
Okay, well, let me go ahead and finish one thing that's not a follow-up, but it's a new thing and maybe this changes what you're, before you get into that decision, let me throw this. On Friday afternoon, I received the unemployment, the new unemployment rate from the state. It usually comes after we start budget and it has been reduced more than staff's estimate. It is backed down to the minimum rate allowed. So I did a calculation on what that meant to the general fund because that's by far the biggest and that saves us $29,000. So it's a wash between, if, so I can put the $30,000 in if council so desires for a primary election, but basically we didn't do anything to the bottom line of the general fund because the 29,000 is also offset the other way.
And that's, that's a certainty, that's 29,000?
That is a certainty.
And what's the reason to get for that?
Because the unemployment rate is less than the staff was estimating, apparently some claims were denied or something. It's backed down to the minimum, minimum allowed by statute.
Well, if it's a, it's a wash, then it's fine.
Yeah, I don't have a problem budgeting for a primary.
Especially if it's in March and we'll know early enough. If we don't have one, then.
January 8th, 27. That's a great point. And then we can move it.
Sure, I mean, it is.
But if there's a $30,000 savings, we don't need to move it at all.
Hmm.
Right?
It could just be saved money. That's correct.
Well, no, I mean, it's just, it's just, the number is the same number as it was.
Right.
So now I don't think we need it.
That was great.
Okay, I'm confused. What are my instructions?
Moving right along.
Let it go, okay.
All right, we're good.
You lost me.
Okay.
Okay, and I, it was all, can you make that one sure? Oh, there was one more. Councilwoman Harrison had asked about, could there be any way we could do a sales tax correlation to kind of go along with park activities? Jess is going to meet with Steve DeVore and see if there's a way, you know, when you get into talking about sales tax and specifics, I'm really not supposed to talk about that with anybody by statute, so we could, I'd rather not do that in-house if there's a way that Mr. DeVore can do it, if there's some kind of generally accepted practice on how these things are calculated and Jeff was going to meet with him later this week.
Well, there's got to be an equation out there that we can use.
There is, don't know what it is.
Because with y'all's baseball all-star game coming, it's like, you know, $60 million injection and blah, 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 which is awesome numbers, so I'm sure you can drill into that number for, you know, city type.
Anytime a project comes through the city and it's for an abatement or whatever, we're required to do a cost benefit analysis and the state does it. And I know that Tom Reader has ways, I don't know if he uses the state or whatever, but there are ways to make these calculations. This is a little smaller scale, so I don't know if there is an existing one, I'm going to guess there is, but that's why I just met with Mr. DeVore. So I didn't think, you know, you haven't been forgotten, we just not have an answer yet.
And we do have that meeting scheduled, I believe it's later this week and certainly be happy to share what I find out, the people, if there may be more of an overall economic impact versus just specific to sales tax, but we'll see what we can find.
Because I think that'd be a great highlight for your department and for our community to be able to say X number of thousands of dollars were injected into, you know, local business owners. I think that's awesome.
And that's all the follow-up I had, so unless you all had anything else, I can start moving forward on tonight's stuff, so.
Yep.
Well, wait, wait a second, I mean, no one else has any questions about Dave's presentation yesterday, or last week?
I think you did a great job.
I have a few.
Did you have them before tonight?
It goes right back to Mr. Morrow's statement earlier.
He didn't make his statement until tonight started, so.
Yeah, but I've had it several times in the past and it's very helpful.
You know, the whole purpose of meetings is to really have a discussion between people in the meeting. In a way, I'm going on a limb, I'm going on a limb here, but when I was in college, we always got our books first, we read the lesson and then the professor actually taught us what we, what was in the book and then we asked questions. Now, we're not getting the books, unlike last year where we got the book, we got the whole book ahead of time, we could read as far ahead as we wanted to. We're not getting the books until the night of the presentation. And then at the end of the presentation, we're getting a, does anyone have any questions? Well, there's about 30 or 40 pages worth of information here and only if a person got it in advance would they know to look at things and ask questions on it, in my opinion.
And as you indicated, you got this last week, you read it, assuming between this week and last week and you can provide those questions ahead of time to last have the opportunity to, to research.
You know, sometimes when we ask questions, we get a discussion of other questions. And, and in this case, for instance, on the, the primary, we got a lot of people talking, we got, we got discussion on the, on the mowing fees. What's the harm? I mean, is there, is there a time limit to these meetings that I don't know about?
No, there's not a time limit.
Well, I mean, what's, so what's the harm in asking questions?
There's no harm in that.
I mean, it seems like you don't want to ask questions.
No, I don't want, I know, that's not what I'm saying at all.
When they get the book to me a week.
Just a minute, just a minute, please, just a minute. I've been accused of not wanting to ask questions, that's not the case at all. I want to ask questions and I want the staff to have the opportunity to answer, to get answers to those questions, so if you could provide them ahead of time and then ask the question at the meeting, that's fine. I have no problem at all with that. I have no problem at all with that.
And if I had, why would I ask the question in the meeting? I mean, that's the whole thing I'm trying to do, is ask the question in the meeting so we don't have to duplicate. I mean, what, what happens if I ask a question in an email and then another question comes up from somebody else? I mean, there's a, isn't there an open meetings violation in the, in the offing there?
No.
If people start asking questions about, back and forth about the same things?
No, because they're not asking questions back and forth, you're sending.
If he doesn't have the answers, he can get them to me next week.
But then you continually, continually ask the question over and over again, even when they say they don't have the answer. So can we come to an agreement that you won't do?
No, I asked, no, I asked a different question. I mean, Mike said that refunding is not, is not reissuing of a bond. I asked him if he knew that for sure, he didn't.
Is there any chance at all they could be non-argumentative when you're asking those questions?
I'm, I'm just asking questions, I'm not trying to be argumentative. So let's just go with the questions and see. How about it? We've spent, how much time have we spent asking?
We're trying to get some decorum under which we conduct meetings. We're trying to get some decorum under which council.
Why don't you?
Treat staff, and staff and council should treat staff in a respectful manner, so staff does not feel that they have a hostile work environment.
Hostile work environment? Does he not know the answers to the questions?
I'm just, I asked you if you provide.
Why don't we ask the question if he doesn't know the answers?
I asked you if you had those questions before tonight.
If he doesn't have the answers, we can wait for the answers later.
Then please, ask the questions.
Okay. What does developer reimbursements mean? Does anyone else, before I ask that question, does anyone else know what that means? Okay, there's one, I'm going to put a tally mark here, there's one answer.
And then what sections I get?
That's, that's the first page under capital projects fund. It says, other funds used, under the street improvement fund, other funds used for these projects are federal, state, federal and state grants, county cars program, and developer reimbursements, which didn't, I don't understand what that means.
Actually, could I, could you tell me what page you're on there?
First page on capital projects.
In the past, and it's not on every project, there's been some where a developer will pay part of the project and they pay into it. I'm trying to think of.
Symphony Farms.
I think Symphony Farms, that was the case.
From time to time, we have an arrangement with the developer where they might put in half a road, or, I think on that one, it was part of the road and a storm culvered or whatever.
Right.
Or we did it and they reimbursed us, or, from time to time, there's an arrangement involved in the creation of infrastructure.
And typically it involves a, an agreement between the city and the developer.
Generally, an annexation agreement.
But that's only the, I mean, Symphony Farms is really the only, are there other, been other subdivisions that we've shared, or that we?
Oh.
I'm trying to think, I can't.